Hi, I'm Doug Ross, editorial page editor at The Times. Here for another endorsement interview. This time we have Anthony Pampelone, Jim Polarek, Mike Justin, and this is for Porter County Council, District 4, the Republican side. So, we should probably begin with the easy question. What are your qualifications and why are you running? Mike?
Yeah, I'm running for county council for several reasons. One, I think I have significant experience and qualifications to perform the job and do what's right for the citizens of Porter County. Currently, working for all the foods in the capacity of Vice President of the Valparaiso Division, servicing 65 stores in northern Indiana and southwest Chicago area. In addition to the public or the private sector, I also have public sector experience with the Union Township School Board Corporation. In my eighth year of involvement with theirs, served three years as President of the School Board. And so I think with my private and also public sector experience, I can bring a lot to the Porter County Council.
Okay. Jim?
I'm the current county councilman from District 4. Was elected three years ago to serve the citizens of rural Porter County. I believe I've done a good job at that. Several, when I was campaigning for this spot, one of the main things I heard from the citizens was the poor radio coverage for our firemen in the district, actually throughout the whole county. And that was the main priority, and we have accomplished that by installing a simulcast radio system. So now our firemen don't have to put their pagers on certain windowsills of their house at night. One of the other issues that the citizens of rural Porter County brought to me was the lack of representation on the county. They don't feel their voice is being heard, and I think I've done a good job at that. And I also, youth sports was an issue that the citizens had mentioned. So, with the help of the other council members, the Parks Board and the Commissioners, the county has purchased 63 acres right on State Route 49 about a half mile north of Kouts to help bring those sports fields to the kids. Now, we're also working with the RDA and the town of Kouts to put the $200,000 grant that the town of Kouts got from the RDA to work some federal grants and use it as matching funds to help run sewer, water, and sidewalks up to that park from Kouts. So I have those things going on, and I just want to continue serving the citizens of Porter County.
Okay.
I've had extensive experience in elected office. I started off on the Union Township Advisory Board, served a four-year term there. I then went to serving as the Union Township Trustee, capacity that I'm currently in right now. It's in my eighth year. As the trustee and as a board member in particular trustee, I've had extensive budget experience, formulating and putting together budgets. I could say without a doubt, we're running major surpluses in our funds and providing services, maximum amounts of service at a minimum taxpayer expense. From 2013 to 2014, the tax rate that I proposed and it was approved was reduced by 17% from 2013 to 14 for the trustees' budget. I can't speak for the school corporation, but for the trustees' budget, it went down substantially. That's something I think, right now, we're in a situation in the county with the budget. It's a disaster. We've got serious, serious issues with the budget. I think things need to be addressed and dealt with. There's options that can be done to do that. Other issues that brought me into this race are the federal investigation. You know, I think it's extremely, extremely serious. It's not something to just brush off. The federal government does not get involved in investigating government unless there's something that is there. And unfortunately, just the investigation itself could leave a black eye on the county. And if it goes any further than that, it can be more than a black eye. So, those are a couple of the major things that really have piqued my interest in county government and pursuing, you know, the position that I'm now a candidate for.
Okay, we should talk about the budget deficit. How do you deal with it? Anthony, let's begin with you.
I think one of the main issues we have right now is we've got an E-911 problem. You know, I know at some point, the county took over the dispatching for the cities and towns with the exception of, I think, Porter and Chesterton. And that was the general dispatch. They took over all the E-911. And I know there's been a debate recently about that this is going to be a double taxation. It's farthest thing from the truth. There is no double taxation. The E-911 portion is being funded by E-91 taxes on the phones. There's no double taxation. The general dispatching is not being funded by that. So, at this point, more or less, the large cities such as Valparaiso and Portage have essentially dumped this on the county. To some extent, the county might have brought this on themselves by accepting the general dispatch portion of this, which was really not the requirement at that point. The E-911 was, and they kind of brought it on themselves. But at this point, something needs to be done. And to say that it's all the county's problem right now, I don't think is fair. I don't think is reasonable. And I think that the cities and towns, especially Portage and Valparaiso, need to step up, and something needs to be done to supplement or help the county, you know, fund this. You know, they've taken on their employees, they've taken on all the expenses of it. I mean, you look at, you know, I've read about instances in other parts of the state such as Kokomo and Howard County. They transferred their levy, Kokomo, to the county. Why isn't this something that Porter County can do? You know, why can't, can, can, the question, I guess, would be, can Valparaiso or can Portage transfer their levy to Porter County and properly fund the E-911? I consider public safety a priority, you know. So, I think that's a major, major part of this budget problem, and it's not going to get any better. And it's something that deals with public safety. Beyond that, I think you've got major health insurance costs. And it's created a huge gap in the budget. Unfortunately, a portion of the council, which was not including Mr. Polarek, approved a budget that cannot be funded with the tax revenue that's coming in, essentially. So you have to make some hard decisions. I think there has to be decisions about wants and needs. What you want and what you need are two different things. And I think that's something as a council as a whole that needs to be done. And simply creating more sources of revenue is not going to solve the problem. You have to look at, you know, as a side note here, you look at what Auditor Wyszlinsky did. I commend him for that. I think that he did the right thing. You know, is it, is it great that we have to let people go? No. But if Mr. Wyszlinsky can operate his office, which he's assured the council that he can do, and unfortunately, the council was not inclined to take his word for that, as Union Township trustee, I think Jim and I can both say, we've dealt with Auditor Wyszlinsky's office. And I can say without a doubt that in the eight years that I've been Township trustee, that the office has run professionally and it has run correctly. We get our money on time, there's no chaos, there's no fiascos. Prior to that, I'm not throwing stones at Mr. Kopp, but it was a disaster, you know. And I physically myself, as the Township trustee, deal with that office and deal with the money being received, et cetera, or his deputies and that. And I can't, I have nothing bad to say about it. You know, if people want to implement and institute politics into that, that's unfortunate because he's getting the job done. And that's the bottom line. And when he comes to the council and says, "I've made staff reductions," and these staff reductions are something that I think is going to help close the gap in this county's, you know, revenue problem or budget problem, they should be, the council should be embracing that. And Mr. Polarek did, I'll commend him for that. He did, they did. There was others that were on the council. They, you know, they embraced that. But there were others that I think were unfortunately probably playing politics. And that's not where I'm coming from. I want to see government work, and I think Mr. Wyszlinsky wants to see government work. And when he says, "I can run my office at a cheaper rate and eliminate employees," it's a sad thing to have to eliminate employees. Nobody wants to let people go, but if it makes the organization better and more efficient, then so be it. And, you know, so I think, and health insurance, I just want a little bit of touch on that. I know there's a huge gap in the health insurance. One issue to look at is, I would be inclined to say, no council member should get health insurance. And no commissioner should get health insurance. The administrative offices, I see as a different issue. Those are, to me, should be full-time jobs. Whether those administrative office holders are actually being a full-time office holder, I don't, I can't answer that question. But they should be, you know. So, I think that we as leaders here should say, "We have a budget problem. We're not going to throw this on other people." Let's ourselves say, "We're not going to take this insurance." The commissioner, same thing. "We're not going to take the insurance." You know, we have public defenders that are part-time positions. They're taking insurance. Their families are taking insurance. I mean, it's just an out-of-control situation which has led to the budget fiasco that we're currently in.
Okay, Jim?
I commend Anthony. I mean, he pretty much hit everything on the head there. You know, when I came into office three years ago, the first budget that I voted for, we flatlined spending. Last year, we cut spending by close to 10%, and we were called names and all kinds of things. We had elected officials say we were holding the guns to the employees' heads. And this year, the budget which I did not support increased spending. Three years ago when I came in, Auditor Wyszlinsky, along with the Treasurer and the Assessor, created the TQM program. And three years ago, they pointed out that with the tax caps, our revenues were going to start dropping and dropping drastically. So we started addressing that on the council, but then this past year, for unknown reasons, they decided to go against the predictions, and they're underfunded by approximately 3 to 5 million, depending on where the health insurance costs come in. The health insurance, while the council has, you know, we can try and tell the Commissioners that they need to trim the cost of health insurance. That's one of the problems with the way county government is organized. The county Commissioners will go out and they'll pick whatever health insurance they want, they'll give it to whoever they want. Doesn't matter if there's conflicts with who they give the health insurance to, they will give it to us, and they will hand the council the bill and say, "Here, figure out how to pay it." They're smart guys, they'll figure it out. As far as the E-911, he is correct. It was six or seven years ago where the Commissioners took on Valparaiso's 911 along with their general dispatching before there was even a state law in place. And then they took on Portage's about four to five years ago, I believe. And the general dispatching, as Mr. Pampelone pointed out, is totally separate from E-911. There is no state legislation stating that we have to take over and fund general dispatching for municipalities. And the majority, I believe it's upwards of 80% of the calls that come in through the dispatch center are general dispatching. Well, just less than 20% are actual E-911 calls. So, we cannot increase revenues to fund our way out of a budget shortfall. While some want to count on investing hospital interest, I'm sorry, investing in the hospital principal to generate more interest, and they want to use that interest to fund the budget that has a shortfall. Even if they could generate the 5% interest that they're hoping on, it's not enough to cover the budget. So, it's obvious what needs to happen. That budget needs to be cut. Mr. Wyszlinsky started by cutting his office. The one thing that also needs to happen is the change in the work rules. We have employees that are working less than 30 hours a week by the time you figure the six-and-a-half-hour workday, and up to five weeks vacation, and four weeks of personal, or I'm sorry, two weeks of personal and sick days. You have to overstaff the office just to make up for the times that people are not there. And at this point, the Commissioners have refused to address the work rules. So, those are the major issues with the budget. And like I said, the first budget I supported was, we flatlined last year's budget, we dropped by close to 10%. And this year's, which I did not support, was increased and included pay raises on the back of hospital interest money. And that's what they're counting on using. By the end of this year, that hospital interest money will probably be all gone to fund their budget shortfall. Where they're going to fund the budget from next year, I cannot honestly tell you. Because it is not, they cannot pass a budget like it was passed and fund it. It's not possible.
Okay.
Yeah, in my mind, the budget crisis is the most critical issue in Porter County at this particular point. We're running significant deficits. You know, I have experience in budgeting, not only with the Finance and Facility Committee in my church, which is a $1.7 million budget, the Union Township School Corporation budget, and then the private sector budget that I deal with far exceeds Porter County budget dollar amounts. And I have spent all my time, and it's up to 28 years, with my private sector budgeting experience. All that time, budgeting to me is pretty simple. Big problem, but pretty simple process to understand. You have to increase revenue, you have to decrease expenses, you have to make sure that you don't spend more than you receive. And the council, you know, no doubt has passed a budget that is in a deficit. And although I appreciate Mr. Polarek's vote against it, opposing that budget, I think it's incumbent upon anyone on the council and the board to try to influence the council to ultimately do the right thing and not pass a budget that is in a deficit. The issue surrounding how to solve it, I think the budget should be handled in a proactive sort of way, not in a reactive way, in the sense that once the budget is set, those are the limitations that the departments and the council has to work with. And when additional expenses come in saying, "We should do this, we should do this, we need more money," the bottom line is, if you don't have the revenue there to pay for it, you can't pay for it. So you can't, you can't spend the money. I've had the opportunity to go to the last half a dozen council meetings. A couple of the meetings that I went to, I witnessed raises being given out to employees. This is after the budget that was written, and knowing that the budget's in deficit, we all accept the fact that it's a crisis, yet we gave, I believe it was $8,000 increase to the museum director. And I don't know the museum director, might be the greatest guy in the world. The position may warrant the salary that they've given him, but the bottom line is, it wasn't called for in the budget, and you can't go into the budget year and just award arbitrarily someone an $8,000 raise. And I think that's, in my mind, the carelessness that's gone into the budgeting process, where we haven't written a proper budget to begin with, and we're not following the budget that we agreed upon. And I would also say that, in my mind, one of the difficulties that the council has and also the Commissioners have, and why Porter County government doesn't work as it should, is that there's no doubt a significant amount of dysfunction among the council. There's a significant amount of dysfunction in the Commissioners' office, and then you put the two of them together, 10 people total, to try to get them to agree on something that's right for Porter County. It's obvious, and we shouldn't be surprised, when we fail. And I think to work in a more collaborative effort on the council, along with the Commissioners, to try to determine what the budget should be, what the programs should be, and do it in a proactive sort of way, would obviously make more sense and would also produce a budget that we could stick with and we could live within our means. So it's very simple. You have revenue, you have expenses, your revenue has to exceed your expenses. If that doesn't happen, then you're in the situation that we are here in Porter County today.
Okay. We should talk about the animal shelter issue. Jim, let's begin with you.
When I came onto council three years ago, I took the Commissioners a sketch of an animal shelter which could have been built for less than a million dollars. The county owns 40 acres at the corner of 130 and 149, where that building could have been built and opened its doors within four months. But that never materialized. There's people that like to make politics out of the animal shelter issue, and it's very simple. You could build a building for under a million dollars, it would not be a Taj Mahal, but you do not need a Taj Mahal for an animal shelter. The problem that we're facing is, for one, the Commissioners have never come up in front of the council with an official request to fund an animal shelter, to build a new animal shelter. The numbers that they have been throwing around was a $4 million animal shelter, which we do not need a $4 million animal shelter. We could build one for, as I said, less than a million dollars, and be put on land that the county already owns, and be closer to the city of Portage, so the city of Portage could utilize that animal shelter instead of going to the town of Hobart for their animal control. Or not their animal control, but their animal shelter.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, I am not all that versed on the history of the Porter County animal shelter issue, other than what I've read, you know, read in the paper. I have had the pleasure over the years volunteering with my daughter at the shelter. And granted, the conditions aren't the best, but I can tell you, through our volunteering and other people volunteering, it makes the facility, in my mind, acceptable. And especially in the sense where we're talking about a budget shortfall, we're talking about not having enough money, talking about trying to figure out how we're going to raise revenue and cut expenses. I would think that in Porter County government, the budget would certainly be the priority item over talking about what should be done with the animal shelter at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, with all due respect, I mean, something has to be done with the shelter. I mean, it's been an ongoing issue, it's inhumane, you know, obviously, it's, something has to be done. And I tend to agree with Mr. Polarek. I mean, we're not looking for a Taj Mahal here. You know, if we have county property that could be put on, you know, let's do that. Let's put something in that's going to be something that can be grown into, you know, but it's going to take care of the situation at hand. You know, and again, I agree, the Commissioners need to step up too. You know, it goes back to the whole issue of cooperation. The, all the posturing and political fighting needs to come to an end from all ends, and this is one of those issues. And it's just become a political football, and it's completely unnecessary. You know, it's a simple issue, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. We should probably talk about, the council and the Commissioners have had kind of some personality issues, we'll just say, in the past, and so we should talk about how to address those. Let's begin with you, Mike.
Yeah, talking about the council and the Commissioners both.
Right.
I would, in my view, I would say that we have a dysfunctional council, and that in concert with a dysfunctional Commissioners' office. And so you have those 10 individuals or office holders leading county government, and I would say at this point, it's dysfunctional. I have experience in boardsmanship. In my experience at Union Township School Corporation, we were a five-person board over my two terms there. To say that all five of us have agreed or shared the same views or opinions over that course of time, that's not at all accurate. And so we've had different personalities, different viewpoints. We've had people from, the school board, of course, is a nonpartisan office, and I couldn't tell you the political affiliation of anyone that I've served with over the last eight years. But what we've done is we look at the issue, we know what ultimately is right for the school corporation, not always agreeing, but working together to try to find out what the best solution is for the school and the 1,650 students that we serve, and we compromise. And do I, would I say that Mike Justin gets his way every time a particular issue comes up? Absolutely not. But in the spirit of cooperation, to do what's right for the entire corporation and to move forward, we agree on something, and then we go out and move forward with it, all in the spirit of cooperation. And we've had some very difficult moments over time, trying to get everybody to agree with that, but we've been able to accomplish that. And I think do in large part because frankly, part of the politics aren't a part of it. And we've heard today plenty of issues already about the partisan nature of the council and the Commissioners and the difficulty they've had. And I'd prefer not to talk so much about that and try to find out how we can get 10 people in the county, which, let's face it, Porter County with a population of 160,000 people, it's not a huge geographical area. The 10 people that are in leadership positions, in my mind, shouldn't have such divergent views on how the county should run. And so I think if we put politics aside, and we put personal agenda-type items aside and work together, the 10 people that lead Porter County government can do just that and serve the people of Porter County in a very positive, positive way. But to me, it's all about boardsmanship. Unfortunately, in my experience in not only the private sector, because there's part of that in the work that I've done for all the, but most definitely in the school corporation, boardsmanship is critical. And that's why, along with the help of superintendent and faculty and staff that do a terrific job, we lead them in a positive way. And as a result of that, we have a highly successful school corporation, and very proud of the work that we've done with that. And it's because of the boardsmanship.
Okay. Anthony?
Yeah, I think that if anyone's read the paper, is familiar with county government at all, that we have a serious situation between the Commissioners, maybe between some of the Commissioners, between the Commissioners and the council, and between council members with fighting. And I think it is absolutely political, and it may not be R&amp;D political, but it's political. And I think that a lot of time is spent protecting political turf, pitting employees against council members, pitting council members against each other. It's completely unproductive. You know, I mean, it's obviously, to me, the whole thing smacks of a complete lack of leadership. And I think right now, more than ever, the county needs leadership. And I think when you have leadership, like I've led in Union Township, working with a Township Advisory Board, and working with the volunteer fire department, and getting things done, getting things accomplished, that's what we need right now. We need somebody that's going to take the reins, that's going to put aside all the grievances. I have no horse in this race. I'm not planted in this race by any political faction. You know, whether anyone knows it or not, there's factions, you know, in this whole thing. No one's put me into this race. No one's propping my campaign up. No one's brought in consultants and campaign managers from outside the area. No one's going to funnel huge amounts of special interest money into my account. I'm running a grassroots campaign to try to properly represent the residents of the 4th District, which is reflective of their interests and their concerns and what they believe county government should look like. And I don't need consultants and campaign managers from Indianapolis or otherwise to do that. So, you know, I think that the first day of office, that was one of the questions in The Times questionnaire, first thing I would do, meet with the Commissioners, meet with the council president. Let them know I'm setting a new tone. No one's going to agree on everything, but we can work together and find common ground, and there's going to be things we can work together on, and there's going to be things that we're going to have to agree to disagree on. You know, but my objective's going to be to raise the level of professionalism and raise the level of discourse between everybody in county government, and not be a participant in what has ultimately become what we read in the newspaper.
Okay, Jim?
I think a lot of the discourse between the Commissioners and the council, yet you look at the budget. We've had to cut budgets over the last two years up until this point, and it made members of the Board of Commissioners very unhappy, to the point where it became personal attacks on council members. You cannot expect council members to sit there and turn, well, you can expect this, but it's hard human nature-wise to bite your tongue when you're being personally attacked because you're doing your job. We saw the budget, predicted the budget drops, started trying to address those over the last two years, and until this year, we were pretty effective at that. In fact, last year, when Mr. Reavis and myself were president, vice president for two months before the Commissioners got involved and had us removed by a majority of the council members, we were trying to set up two meetings a month to start addressing budget shortfalls. But that was not to happen. But in regards to the whole Commissioners and the council as a whole, I don't think there's an issue between everybody. I have worked with Ms. Blaney, the South County Commissioner, in regards to securing the property in the south for the parks, which was money that the Parks Board had saved up over the last several years on their budgets. They had accumulated those funds to They had accumulated those funds to purchase property. And I also worked with Ms. Blaney in regards to getting, uh, funding for the Hebron Fire Department so they can add on to that bill, their building down there to house an ambulance, for a backup ambulance for the south part of the county. So to say that all the council members and the commissioners, that there's issues there, I, I don't think the bodies as a whole there is because I've shown that we can work together to get things done. But people don't like having their budgets cut and some of them take it personal. Even, you might be able to sit there and say, "Yeah, you gotta, you know, agree to disagree." Well, some people don't like to agree to disagree. If you disagree with them, they take it personal.
Okay. Uh, we should, uh, ask, uh, I think we have room for only one more question we should ask. Uh, what's the difference between you and your opponents? Uh, Mike?
I, I think for me, uh, I think a lot of it is based on experience. Uh, it's based on experience, uh, in the, uh, public sector, uh, with my Union Township School Corporation, uh, experience there with eight years, three years as president, highly successful, uh, school district and the work that we've done, I'm very, very proud of. Uh, obviously involved with the budgeting process with the school, uh, my involvement with the church, uh, specifically as it relates to the Finance and Facility Committee. Me, I've served there several years, budget of $1.7 million. Where we work on budgets, we talk about, even in the church setting, talk about revenue, we talk about expenses. We review the budget mid-year to make sure that we're in line and if we're not, then we have, uh, alternate plans in place to make sure that we can, uh, we can stay within our, stay within our means. And then, uh, I think, uh, also most importantly, the experience that I have, uh, with the Aldi Food Corporation, I've worked for Aldi for 28 years, served in the capacity of district manager, director of real estate, director of operations, now the vice president of Valparaiso Division, servicing 65 stores, responsible for, uh, over 1,000, 1,000 employees, those 65 stores. The warehouse and office facility that we have here in Valparaiso oversaw, uh, both of the, saw, oversaw the construction of the building originally back in 1991, '92, oversaw the, uh, expansion and remodel in 2000 and currently going, uh, going through a major expansion remodel, uh, here this year as well, out of the warehouse facility. Um, and I think, uh, with the experience that I have, uh, in, uh, budgeting along with experience with, uh, construction projects, I've been involved with well over 100 real estate land purchases and construction projects in my capacity with Aldi. Uh, major remodels out at the store level in excess of 200, uh, remodel projects and reset projects out there. Uh, so I, I know, I know how business works, I know how budgeting works, I know how dealing with 1,000-plus employees work from a personnel, human resource standpoint. I'm, uh, familiar with making decisions, uh, and being the, the, uh, the person responsible for the Valparaiso Division. Uh, I have experience in all of those, all those areas of running a major, uh, running a major business. And I think, so with that private sector experience, along with the public sector experience, my, my love for public service and, uh, and I feel there's a strong need for it, and I believe I have the, uh, the time and talents, uh, to be a productive force on the council.
Okay. Anthony?
My, you know, again, my time as, uh, in township government particularly, as the township trustee, but as well as the township board, I've had extensive amounts of government experience. Um, I took over an office that basically needed a complete overhaul in 2007. I've rebuilt the office completely from the ground up. I have a innumerable amount of accomplishments as the township trustee. Um, and being a township trustee is much, much more difficult than running, uh, or being on a school board or doing all these other things. I mean, you are it, you're the administrative officer, you're the one that's putting the budget together. And quite frankly, my budget, as I stated earlier, from 2000 to 2013 to 14, the tax rate was reduced by 17%. You know, with all due respect to Mr. Justin, you can talk about budgeting and having lots of budget experience, but when you're actually exponentially increasing taxes in the context of that budget, that is not helpful at this point. It's not something that I feel that we need on the county level. And that's not something that I've done. I've provided, uh, as best as I can, as the township trustee, maximum service at minimum taxpayers' expense, including keeping taxes down while still providing basic services. And aside from my experience in, in, uh, government, I also have an extensive amount of legal experience as an attorney. Uh, I've practiced for upwards of 12 years, uh, in many different fields, civil and criminal. And I think that that knowledge in itself gives me a lot of life experience, a lot of experience in connected to the government, um, you know, field. And I think that that in itself sets me apart from the other candidates and I think would be a great benefit for the council at this point, combination of both my public service as well as my, uh, as well as my legal experience at this point.
Okay, Jim?
Uh, when I ran the first time four years ago, I promised the citizens of rural Porter County that I would represent and be their voice in county government and I believe I have done an excellent job at that. I've told the firemen I would work my best to get their radios fixed, they got fixed. Told the parents down there I would do my best to bring some, uh, youth sports fields for their little leagues, their soccer and their softball and their baseball, and we're seeing that happen. While there's not the money to build it right now, we are in the process of forming a foundation down there to start raising private dollars to build this facility. And as far as public service, I spent three and a half, three years in the military. I'm a Boy Scout leader, have been, I'm a Cub Scout leader in Morgan Township when my son's not even in Cub Scouts down there and I'm still the Cub Master. And I'm also a Boy Scout leader where my sons in Boy Scouts. I'm a little league coach, public service has been my life since I was a Boy Scout and it continues to this day. I'm a lifelong resident of rural Porter County, except when I was over in Germany for two and a half years. And I think I best represent the voice of the citizens of rural Porter County. While we know how this, the fourth district is, is separated up, a majority of it is rural, except for Hebron and Couse, the two small towns. And I think we need somebody, uh, in county government that has a rural lifestyle and is involved in agriculture. Agriculture is still one of the largest GDP products in Porter County. And at this point, I'm the only one on the council and/or the commissioners that have anything to do with agriculture. And I think it would be sad to lose that part of Porter County's representation in government. So I just, uh, asked the citizens of rural Porter County to keep me in there so I can continue speaking on their behalf.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm afraid that's all the time we have. Uh, again, I'm Doug Ross, editorial page editor, with, uh, Anthony Pamplone, Jim Polarek, the incumbent, I should say, uh, Mike Jesse, uh, Justin, rather, uh, Republican candidates for Porter County Council in the fourth district. Also in the room, uh, Debbie Anson, Porter County General Manager, on our editorial board with me. Thank you for viewing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.